All right. Councilman Stewart, since you are the senior member of the council that's here, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, folks. I take it everyone's, I'm going to call this meeting to order for the May 6, 2025 addition of the Fayette County Council. I take it everyone's had a chance to look over the April 1 minutes. If so, are there any additions or corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second? Do you have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries.
Yes, sir.
I got you.
I forget them all the time.
Madam Auditor, is there any mail tonight?
No.
Okay. Mr. West, do you have anything?
I don't have anything yet, but I might chime in when we get to the ORR group.
All right. No committee reports tonight. Commissioners, do you have anything you'd like to talk about?
I'll make a claim to be innocent.
Very brief. What we did today, we had a very light schedule on today's agenda. We did give the, paved the final dough ahead for the county recorder to enter the contract for the record scanning in her office, an amount of $104,441.08. And that would be only for Phase 1 of that project. We also gave the cemetery commission permission to apply for a grant from the Fayette Community Foundation for $2,500 for nine, for signs from nine of our pioneer cemeteries in the Those were, I can tell you which ones they are, Wiley Chapel, Kirkwood, Union Chapel, Old Friends, Robinson Chapel, Mount Zion, Mount Garrison, Simpson, and Brumfield. And every one of those pioneer cemeteries are ones that were right next to the road. If you've ever seen the, if you've ever seen the sign that's down at the Knoll Town Cemetery, all these additional ones will be just like that. They're pretty nice signs. Also, I will mention this, on the 14th of this month, we're going to have our pre-construction meeting on this year's community crossings, matching grant projects with paving projects for this year. So once we get that done, I expect work will probably begin sometime in June, probably early June, which would be a good six months ahead of what we normally do. So, and I like that because getting everything done in warmer weather instead of having to race to beat the snow in November and all. So that seems to be moving along very well. We did hear from Mike Klein Peter Consulting today on the owner occupied rehab grant, but Greg Krymer is here to talk about that. I'll let him do the talking on that tonight. And that's about it. That's about all I know to tell you today.
Okay.
How we doing with Dale over here, Dale? See, they had their punch list on April 17th. And DLZ, during that process, DLZ came up with a, you know, a list of, I don't know how many there were, items that need to be corrected or changed. And they're in the process of getting all that taken care of right now. And I expect them to release, give a final release on that thing within maybe by the end of this month.
And start transferring.
You know, and once they hand it off to us, then it's ours to take over.
So I know you don't know the number, but I mean, we're talking like five pages of things they've got to fix, or?
No, I don't know the number.
Okay.
Because they, the day they did that, they were there all day, going through every single item and just hundreds of items that had to be checked and marked off the list. So I haven't seen a real report on just how many items there were.
Nothing you're expecting to cause a more significant delay than what we've already enjoyed?
No, no. I know, I know one of the items was some bulletproof glass that got broken in delivery. It had to be reordered and it took, you know, weeks to get it, which that guy finally did get installed late last week. Some electrical receptacles had to be either capped or moved, minor things like that.
Okay.
And all the equipment there has to go through the testing phase. It has to be tested and demonstrated that it works and works properly and that sort of thing. And that takes not only people from the contractor, it takes, you know, participation with jail personnel and all that. So I'm, you know, trying to stay out of the way, let them get it done. And once they say, okay, you're all clear, it's all yours, then we'll take it from there.
Okay.
They're really, really close.
Anything else for Dale?
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
Just sorry for my tardiness.
Oh, no problem. Just glad you're here. We're ready to talk about the additional appropriation request. Cumulative Bridge Fund 1135, Account 60621 for Jennings Township Structure Number 21, $100,000. Mr. Mackey?
Yep. Yeah, we had to turn that, put that in one lane, what, about three, four weeks ago?
Yeah.
The road, it's on 450 East, about a quarter mile south of 400 South. It's kind of, the road that goes to Alquina, goes down to, we got down to Everton Road, that's where 450 East is, but it's about a quarter mile south of 400 South. And that whole east part of that structure that's in there now is failing. So, but we were able to keep at least one lane without, yeah. And I've, then just the cans alone, that's a big watershed out there, it's over 700 acres. And just for the cans and everything, it's a little over $42,000 plus all the labor, all the concrete, all the gravel. It's going to be close to that hundred. Because I just had one done down on Williams Road and it's probably half the work and it was around 40. And I had the cans for that. I bought them three or four years ago when stuff was cheaper. But, I mean, these cans here, there's four of them, six foot diameter, 50 feet long. We're going to put two together in order to clear that because it sits at an angle, give us enough clearance in there. That's why, you know, they're so pricey. And probably before the pandemic, it would probably cost 20, 25,000 for these cans. They've pretty much doubled. And I still got some I bought before the pandemic for projects, you know, I don't have a lot left, I've been using them, but, you know, that way save some money over time. But now this is just unexpected. No control.
Does it do the flooding or just age?
Just age. I mean, I think the original, they had like two pieces put together in order to span it, I don't know, 40, 50, 60 years ago, I don't know how old it is. And that east one is just failing. The road's sinking pretty good in the tail on that side. We put, the highway department put a bunch of gravel and barricades there, that way nobody can get over on that side and get in trouble. But you can still get around the west side. It's not heavily trapped. I mean, there's only a couple houses up on that end, the rest of them are down by Everton Road, so I don't know how long it'll take, we'll have to be closing. Probably going to start it towards the end of June, let the water levels get down. Right now, I mean, you can't get anything with that water, but you know.
Billy, are you also in charge of the patching of the roads too?
Yeah. Yeah, right.
They were losing some cars out of our way, I didn't know if you was going to be.
Yeah, you have to get that.
But the car liners just love it. I mean, boy, you get the tires lined there.
Any other questions for Mr. Mackey? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Go ahead. I'll second it.
Okay. Motion made by Councilman Nobby, seconded by Councilman Stewart to pass additional appropriation for Jennings Township Structure 21. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? You voted for it, right, Kay?
Yeah, I said yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just didn't hear you. Motion carries. All right, thank you. Transfer County General Fund 1,000 Emergency Management from Account 30122, training to Account 20220, tires, $450. Mr. Walling, how are you?
Good evening. Yeah, I'm trying to transfer funds from my training account into the tires account. I recently had my truck worked on. When the mechanic had it up on lift, he said my tires are worn to a dangerous point, that they need replaced. So I'm going to go to Dawn's and then I'm also talking to Brad Golf about getting the best tire for the cheapest cost. Because of its heaviness, I want to get a 10 ply tire for that truck, so.
Any questions for Mr. Walling?
Are you going to need four tires, Wayne?
Yeah, I'm going to replace them all at the same time and have the truck aligned.
You think you can get it done for 450?
Well, I've got a little bit of money in my tire liner, so. I doubt that I'll get it.
I bought four tires originally for twice that amount, as I asked.
Right, yeah.
Any other questions? If not, oh, I'm sorry, Kay, go ahead.
Shouldn't he get three close?
It'd be less than $1,000, is what I was told, so.
So, what's your pleasure, folks?
I'm moved we accept it.
Sir? We have a motion on the floor to accept the transfer by Councilman Stewart, seconded by Councilman Nobby. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Walling. No 144s tonight, no business, new business. We have Greg Beimer from Klein Peter Consulting talking about the grant that the commissioners discussed earlier today.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Beimer, thank you for being here.
Yes, good evening. My name is Greg Beimer and I'm with Klein Peter Consulting Group. We've been asked by the county commissioners to meet with the council and explain something, a little items about the owner occupied rehab program that the county commissioners would like to apply for. This grant is offered through OKRA, the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs. The maximum grant amount that the county can receive is up to $500,000. It does have a local match requirement, that local match requirement is $57,000. The grant provides assistance directly to homeowners who qualify by income. The most we can put into any one house or home is $25,000. And there are five things that this money can pay for, and that's everything from a new roof, new furnace, AC, new air conditioning, we can put in a water heater, do electrical upgrades, and then we can also do outside of the house ADA accessibility up to the front entrance of the building. As I mentioned, this grant is to, for these homeowners to qualify, it's an income eligibility requirement and that, those income parameters are everything from a two-person household of $51,950 going down to a five-person household, $70,100, meaning if they earn $70,100, counting all the income from the income earners in that household, if it's $70,100 or less, they qualify. And that goes all the way up to eight people and that would be 85,700. There is a public hearing scheduled for this coming Friday at 1 o'clock. We would like anyone who's interested to attend. We're looking for letters of support, but also letters from individual homeowners who say, this would be a great thing for me because I can't afford a new roof, maybe elderly, fixed income, whatever the cause may be. We need letters from those folks so we can help identify who might be interested in this program. The grant is due one week from this Friday, so it's a pretty quick turnaround. However, these applications are taken on a quarterly basis and so the next application aside from this May, middle of May would be roughly the middle of August, and then the fourth quarter is the middle of November. So we have other opportunities, but I do think the commissioners wanted to try to, if possible, get our application turned in in this round. So I'm here primarily to try to answer questions you may have about the program and then see if you're interested in moving forward based on the requirement of 57,000 in local matching money.
I missed that. What was the total grant?
500,000.
Now, you guys have done several, several things like this for the city in the past, right?
We have, yes. Especially during COVID, we had several, several grants that we were able to get from the county.
Yeah, I was on the city council then and they were really good. Helped keep people in their homes, helped fix up places that are dilapidated, improves the county. I mean, it's a nice investment from us, but I think if we can keep people in their homes, it's a great thing. Is it also available to contract owners of homes?
Contract.
I own the house, I'm selling it to him on contract, he's living in it, it's going to be his house, he pays the contract off, just like if I pay it off, I get my mortgage released.
Yeah, part of the required documentation at the application stage is that the homeowner has to be able to provide us with a deed that shows that they are in fact.
He may not have a deed yet, okay.
Well, and so that's a potential problem.
Okay. Do you have any places, any homes already kind of, some ideas of where we might use some of that money in the county?
Anywhere in Old County qualifies, if I understand your question.
Are there any homes already picked out, like some people are identified?
No, no, I don't think there are any identified yet.
No.
Okay.
Greg, I have a question.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
The thing that you faded, I just was wondering why they don't cover like items in the bathroom, you know, or windows. I'm just wondering why those weren't in the list that you named off.
Primarily, the answer to that is lead-based paint. Many of these older homes have lead-based paint. So when we talk about the improvements we can make for ADA accessibility, it's outside of the house. A new roof, we're not going to touch lead-based paint on a roof installation, putting in a new furnace or new AC and so on. And generally, when you upgrade the electrical, you're not disturbing, you might a little, but not to where it's a concern at the federal level. So lead-based paint is the main culprit for that.
So what person can prove there's no lead-based paint? Can they get those bathroom amenities or windows?
No, the program is pretty specific that it's just for the five things that I mentioned.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
I can say that, and I've told some people this before you got here, Councilman Nobby, that many, many years ago, I audited a grant, a grant that Greg Beimer was the administrator of. He was, he was one of the best in Indiana then, and I'm making an educated assumption that he still is. And I know some other folks who work for Klein Peter too, they're top-notch. I have no doubt about that. I have no doubt about the program and the fact that, that it would be good for our residents. The problem is figuring out where we're going to find match money. And, you know, prior, prior to the meeting tonight, Greg and I had a conversation where it was, our proposal would be stronger if we had letters of support, and right now we don't have any, right? And right now, we don't, while I'm sure we've got people that would need the low to moderate income levels in our community, they're certainly there, we don't have anybody right now that's saying, hey, do my, do my house. Would, pursuing this, you said in August, would our application be stronger if we were able to get some of those things nailed down and give us some time to figure out where we're going, where we're going to find $57,000?
I do think we could, we could make a stronger application. What I don't know is, and I hadn't mentioned this, is that this program is probably the best funded program of all the items that OKRA does, water, stormwater, water towers, fire trucks. They've been able to fund every application they've received since the fourth quarter of 2024 and the first quarter of this year. So I, the question is, if they get hit with 10 or 12 or 15 applications this time, will they still be able to continue to do that? I do think the more time we have, obviously, the stronger we can make the application.
If we, if we apply this time and are denied, we return next time with a stronger application and do they, do they count that against us?
No.
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 What's your pleasure, council?
I agree, and I'll be there, I think it's a good thing for our community and I would do, if you were to go ahead and go with it.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve going for the grant with a local match of $57,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Beimer.
Thank you very much.
Be careful going home. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Hey Scott?
Yes, ma'am.
Is he going to put something in the papers so people will know to show up and apply?
The public hearing is Friday, so it was, it was advertised, but I would imagine after this council meeting that, I'm sure the news examiner will pick up on it as well.
Yeah, I just wondered if it was in the paper yet.
Kay, just to be clear, I want to make sure you're clear. When you say apply, we're nowhere near having applicants to apply for this money. So what we need right now is, we need people to write letters saying, hey, I'm in this category and I need this and it would be very beneficial to me.
Yes, I understand. I just know last time the city had done this, they had huge turnout and actually way more applicants than needed.
And we talked about that prior to the hearing. I would suspect that will be the case this time and you guys can come up with different criteria that you want. You can create a board that reviews applications, you could do it on first come, first served, you could do it to, near towards the elderly. I mean, you've got a, a lot of ways that you can kind of create your own criteria.
But Jeff, isn't that?
I would just confirm if the public would be aware, that's all. Thank you.
Jeff, wouldn't that be more of a commissioner thing to, to make those determinations?
That would be absolutely more of a commissioner's thing, but I'm sure they would enjoy your input, yeah.
Okay.
Stick it on Dale, that's what I say.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Judge Freed, you're up. Tonight, we're talking about the 2026 Indiana Office of Court Services Problem Solving Court Grant Solicitation, Drug Court Needs a County Vehicle to Conduct Necessary Program Functions and Payout Compensatory Time Bank of Drug Court Coordinator in 2025 IDOC Justice Reinvestment Grant and Indiana Court of, Indiana of Court Services Problem Solving Court Grant Funds.
Got three things.
Your honor, go ahead.
I would open by saying I want to start with my, what is your favorite phrase here in this body is, I'm not asking for any new money and I don't need any appropriation, it's all money we already have. So let's all get off on the right foot, okay?
It's a good start, Chris.
That's a good start. I thought you opened with your best stuff, that's what they always say, right? Okay, so this issue one here, the Indiana Office of Court Service Problem Solving Court Grant Solicitation, this is actually apologies and really just trying to clarify something. So the previous grant cycle, we had the DOC grant that encompasses all those grants, the one that the prosecutor gets, the one that community corrections gets, the one that probation gets, all of that was all together, along with this IOCS grant that is listed here that I'm talking about. And it was all part of the same grant process. And so that committee meets and we do our rank ordering thing and voting and then one of the members comes over and presents to you. And that's what happened in the most recent cycle as well, and with Steve, the director over community corrections came over. But what we had overlooked was this court services portion of this grant, which is a different organization. This year was in a, was in a, it was a different application. It was almost identical, but technically it was a different application process. It wasn't within housed within that bigger application this year where it was the previous year. So when he came before you to the cursory thing that he does every year, asking, can we go ahead and make this grant? The board has voted on it and you said yes. We didn't make clear to him and then he didn't make clear to you that he was also asking on our behalf to approve the application for the separate little IOCS grant. So to meet our deadline, we went ahead and did it. But I'm basically just telling you what we did and asking for retroactive approval for what we already did. And we got the money. So, yeah, would you like to vote to accept the money that we already got? That's basically what I'm asking for. Just as a courtesy to let you know, we kind of, it was a little bit of a technical defect in the way that we sent him over here. He should have said, we should have made it clear to him to say, it's a little bit different than last year when I appeared. There's this big grant as usual and then there was this little piece that used to be part of the big piece, but this year it's separate. Maybe we have permission to apply for the big one as usual and the little one and that wasn't made clear to you in the meeting. So I just want to make sure you know, we're not trying to hustle you for anything, but that's what happened.
Mr. West, technically, doesn't he have to get that approval from the commissioners first?
It's a good question.
I could have been here too, I would have.
I think that was the original intent. I don't know which one comes first and he needs permission for both, but I don't know which one comes first.
I think, I would, I would think it would be the executive body first.
We can, or we can go ahead and do it.
You could do it, you could do a contention upon the commissioners approving it.
Yeah, subject to the commissioners' approval.
Yeah. I just, I hate to wait a whole other month to get this, you know.
Judge, how much did you look?
Uh, 15,000, I think.
I mean, we're already kind of doing it backwards anyway, so I don't know that this.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Is it, is it a motion to approve contingent, this is for my benefit, contingent on the commissioners approving?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Is that going to, is that going to make them have to wait another month?
No. No, it's just contingent on, I mean, the next time the commissioners meet, they'll, they'll address it.
Okay.
Is that, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And so you're okay with seconding that, Gabe?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve contingent on the commissioners approving it at their next meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Lovely, thank you. Issue two is this drug court vehicle. There's been maybe some confusion about. confusion about the necessity of this and exactly what the functionality was of the drug court coordinator and assistant coordinator. And some of you have spoken with privately and individually and explained this to in the past, and I think there may be with some confusion. It's not just a desk job. Part of the, part and parcel of this is the requirement to go out to the workplaces, interview the employers, make sure that people are doing the right thing, and just double-check attendance and surprise inspections. And also, some of these people work, for example, on roofing crews and things like that, which is, of course, ripe for possible fraud, drug court, you know, participants, I mean, who work, you know, and not necessarily at fixed location like a factory or a restaurant or something like that. They're working in different locations all the time, which adds risk to the scenario. So they'll go around and check on.
Work release program.
Well, they don't have to be in work release. Yeah, work release has the same kind of problems, though. Yeah, they have the same kind of problems, but this is drug court people, even after they're off work release, but they're still within drug court, when they're living independently in an apartment or something, you know, we still track where they're working all the time.
Sure, sure.
So he asks getting his vehicle. Brandon usually does this, just because he used to be a real cop, and he's, you know, he's just more used to the danger involved of going in someone's house in a sketchy neighborhood and make sure they're there when they're supposed to be there or showing up on a work site somewhere. And some people hypothetically could be hostile. He almost got hit in the head with a hatchet one time doing a home check, so he saw the guy's shadow move around the corner and jumped back and drew his pistol, and the guy had a hatchet pulled back, ready to bonk him in the head with it. So, yeah, there is a certain level of danger there. But this is just a routine part of that job. Sure, he's in his office quite a bit, too, between managing all the grant applications and quarterly reports and annual reports and fiscal reports and operational reports. And now that he's got an assistant, she helps a lot with that. And we're increasing the number of participants, so this is going to continue to go up. He's been driving that big Dodge four-wheel drive, his personal vehicle, and running an awful lot of home personal money through that. There was an old Explorer that's sitting over there on the deadline now. It's got a flat tire on it, but I'm told it's operational, other than, probably needs an oil change and some tires. And we have money for that through the grant and user fees to pay to get that thing roadworthy and whatever else we need to pay, you know, fractional cost of putting that on the insurance or whatever needs to be done, we have the money to pay the county out of grant and user fees, not use taxpayer dollars, zero cost to general fund.
You're talking about program income, sir?
Program income, yeah. So that's what I'd like, is just this body, and that sounds like something probably also acting chairman of, probably something I have to go to the commissioners with as well, for sure. But possibly another contingent vote that if we can get that Explorer assigned to us and fix it at a zero cost and operate it at a zero cost with county general fund through only program fees and grant funds, that we would be allowed to do so, to get my people out of their personal vehicles running around all over the place.
So you won't need a motion from us to purchase a vehicle?
No.
At your expenses?
We don't quite have that kind of money yet. The darn vehicles are so expensive at this point. We don't really, we'd like to do that at some point, if this program gets big enough, you know, which I hope it does sometime before I head out to Dale Cemetery. But, yeah, we can get by with that used vehicle, I think.
Used vehicle.
Yeah, that we already have sitting over there. No one's using it. Like I say, it's not even operational right now, but I'm informed that it ran when it was parked. It's got a flat tire and a couple of things, you know, a few hundred dollars to get it going again. But we've got that, cover that.
Then what you're needing from us is subject to commissioners approval to allow you to go ahead and use the other vehicle?
Yeah. Your approval would just be to use our internal funds
Okay.
for the support of the operation of that vehicle, contingent upon the commissioners going ahead and formally assigning that vehicle to our purpose.
I will make that motion. He just...
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second on the floor to, subject to commissioner approval, to assign an Explorer, correct?
Yes, sir.
An Explorer to the drug court. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And then the third issue, again, the money has already been sitting around for a year in the previous grant cycle, not the current one, but there was, we applied for $15,792 in the previous grant cycle for the purpose of training funds and reimbursement of payroll benefits and comp time for staff, which at that time was just Mr. Burgess. Now we have two employees, but at that time it was just Mr. Burgess. And so we have the $5,000 in the training budget. That didn't seem to be a problem, but the remaining $10,792, which was for reimbursement for the paying fringe and payout of comp time of Mr. Burgess, that money's still sitting there, and it's never been paid out for it. So I just want to go through the formality of saying, "We asked for," that's one of the line items in the grant, "asked for money from the grant administrator for that exact purpose," spelled out, and there was nothing hidden. It was for that purpose. They gave it to us for that purpose, and we're getting ready for our operational audit, and we're already working, almost complete with the fiscal audit. And they asked him, "Why is that money still sitting there?" And I said, "Well, we never got approval," and I don't know whether I skipped that before, or maybe that was a more controversial thing than I imagined it was going to be.
Let me, if you don't mind me interrupting.
No, go ahead, please.
There's a little bit of a problem with that because it's in the handbook that we don't pay out compensatory time. And so, I mean, this council can do, you know, whatever the pleasure the council is, we'll obviously do, but I would not go along with a vote to do this at this point without the commissioners looking at it. I mean, I won't even vote subject to their approval for this because I think it opens a Pandora's box of issues throughout the county. And that's what I would be concerned about. I mean, I understand what you did for the grant and that kind of thing, but we've got a kind of a problem here that the commissioners really need to work out, okay? And I'm just telling you how I feel about it, but the council can do it.
Well, of course, the courts, and we're working on that. It's taking longer. We're about a month and a half behind when I meant to do that, but we're going to have our own handbook that covers, you know, among others, probation and court staff as well. So that would take you out of that problem as far as your own handbook applying to my staff. That way, if someone were to challenge that, some other person not working within the court services portion would say, "Well, the handbook says this," and you could say, "Well, they're not governed by that handbook." They are right now, as we're sitting here. They're still governed by that.
Sure.
But momentarily, I mean, this month, we're going to publish our own handbook that covers all of those people I just mentioned. So, and that won't be in that one, and we are allowed to do that under state court administration. So that would get you around that commentary by other employees. You would say, "Well, they're just by law. They're not, no longer governed by the same handbook." And so that rule, along with the entire handbook you're referring to, doesn't even apply.
But as of tonight, it does.
Okay, fair enough. Yeah, fair enough. Or it could be changed to say, you know, if you can get non-appropriated money some way through a grant otherwise, to do that, then fine. If you can't, you can.
And if we don't use this money, we lose it essentially, right?
Yeah, they're wanting to know why it's still sitting there.
Yeah. I never understood why we have such an issue with that. If we've got grant money that's set aside for that purpose, then I think we should spend it for those purposes.
We specifically asked for it for that purpose. We're not trying to sneak up on anybody or reclassify it or anything like that. I mean, they know. Brandon's been talking, like I say, with the fiscal auditor people, and they're wondering, "What are you doing?"
Yeah. If we don't do it, we'll lose it, and then we'll lose it probably the next year and the next year. I think we're getting into a nasty cycle there. I'd be very okay with voting on today contingent on commissioners approval, so I would like to make that motion.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Me. Motion carries.
Okay. Well, thank you then. We'll submit a claim on that vote then. And I'll see the commissioners about this to make sure they're happy with all three of these items as well on the 20th. Thank you for your time.
Sure.
Any other, any random questions? I'd be happy to field from the audience.
Get some more money out there. That sounds great. Fund some more.
Yeah, we're trying. We're hustling. You know, that was one of the real benefits of getting a second employee for drug court with the grant. It's a funny thing. It almost builds momentum. It's like a snowball. Because when you get, Brandon was, you know, the whole one-man band for a long time, as was Mr. Raider before him. And you have to do all that admin stuff and do the in-house interviews and do the home visits and do the job visits, you know, and arrange with all the counseling people, of whom there are many. There's only so much time you have to write new grants. You can barely keep service to the ones you already have. Well, now that he's got the help, he has more time to mess around looking for new avenues for new money. I think we're going to see this snowball up. I think we're going to do better and better as we go along.
How much money was left in the grant?
I don't know right now. No, I wouldn't. I can get that to you if you want. Brandon wouldn't, he might probably go there right off topic.
Do you have any idea how many people are involved in it?
In the grant application?
Not like in the actual drug court, like?
I think we're right now, we're at 19, I think. We're at 19. We've got another one coming in. I'm not sure if he pled in. Your guy, was it? That Becker kid?
I think it was. I saw him Sunday night. He's a good guy. I hope he gets it.
Yeah, I understood he had a plea and was pleading in, so we'll have 20 right quick. If it's not this Thursday, it'll be next. So we'll be, I think, at 20 by the end of the month. And a few more are in the pipeline. Of course, they have to say yes, you know, it's a plea. You have to agree to it. And I'm afraid our reputation has preceded us now. I mean, I think it was easier, actually, counterintuitively, when I started the program, I thought people, you were kind of buying a pick and a poke because no one knew how exactly it was going to go. But it seemed like it was easier to get people to sign up early. Now, the word's out. We've been doing this almost eight years, and people know. Words got out on the street, you know, we don't mess around with these people. I mean, we're on them like white on rice in a styrofoam cup on a paper plate in a snowstorm. I mean, you know, they know that we're going to be right in their face. And I tell them the first day they're in there, "I don't care where you've been on probation or where you've been on parole. You have never experienced the level of supervision that you're about to get." It's really a weird experience for an adult human being to have someone on them like this. It's almost like a first grader or a second grader at the beginning part of the program. Then it gets easier as you go along because you're trying to get them, you're trying to get them tuned up to be a regular, taxpaying adult. But some of them, you know, it's just tentative, a little bit more tentative now that the word's out that this is no, this is no cakewalk. You don't just show up and throw up and sign in on a meeting sheet and say you attended and walk out, and you don't get by with that kind of stuff. Because Brandon's like, he's like the ghost. I mean, he's just always hiding around corners and sneaking up on people and making sure that they're afraid of him. And I'm glad. They should be. He's helpful, but...
And he takes it serious.
He takes it serious as a heart attack, which is exactly what I expect.
That's great.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions for Judge Freed?
No.
Thank you, Judge.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any patron concerns tonight? Hearing none. I'll entertain the motion for adjournment.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Stay.